I will call this meeting to order of the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, our meeting of October 22nd. Roll call, please.
Trustee, Franklin Blackwood.
Here.
Pauline Beck.
Here.
Chris Treckel.
Here.
If we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, preposterous posting, Lisa.
The addenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the village website.
All right. And we're going to move right into public comment, and we do have an invited guest this evening. I have asked Margie Banker to come here, and I see that she has, and she's also brought some of the school board members as well. Margie is the Superintendent of the Cambridge Area Public Schools.
Good evening.
Some might call her Doctor.
Some call me Doctor. Thank you. And good evening. I would like to introduce our Board of Education members who are joining us today. Jesus Rivera, Jim Wambel, and Tracy Travis as well. So thank you for inviting us to come annually to do a check-in about sort of the state of our public schools. This idea is to create a two-way dialogue, give you guys a chance to ask questions you might have or information you might like us to take back to our Board of Education to share in that setting. Our Board of Education meetings are the third Monday of the month, each month, and so typically it would occur last night, but this month we have our budget approval for our final budget and a levy that occurs next Monday. So there's still time to get to a really important meeting if you were so inclined. Every summer, a newsletter comes around to every person in the postal code, and I hope that this is familiar and that you likely saw this in early August at your homes. And essentially what it does is give kind of the big picture of what's been going on in our schools the last year. There is an infographic that shares sort of that out-of-view information about just who we are in a quick look. So looking across our four schools, we have approximately 900 students that attend Cambridge Public Schools, elementary, middle school, high school, and Kaftanong Trails Environmental Charter School located at the Severson Learning Center. We also have opportunities for students to engage in virtual education. We have a partnership with area school districts and offer that for students to engage in virtual education. That said, we have been running about a $16 million budget. We have had a falling mill rate the last couple of years as we employ our levy. There is a constant effort to be fiscally responsible and good stewards of the resources that we are so grateful for, especially on the heels of a successful operational referendum two years ago that really assisted us with adjusting to 10 years of essentially deferred costs of education that we had, that we had no increases that were matching our rate of inflation. So very much helping us to maintain our, you know, programming, our lights, our electricity, our employee salaries, the things that operations are associated with. That said, I also like to highlight some of the really tremendously awesome things that go on in Cambridge schools. Last year, Sarah Krajewski, who is our elementary art teacher, was named Wisconsin Teacher of the Year. A pretty elite opportunity for Cambridge to get recognition at a state level where, though we are small, we are quite mighty and offer really exceptional learning opportunities for kids. Cambridge Schools really prides itself on well-rounded educational opportunities. So though we have the usual suspects of math and science and English and social studies, we also have awesome opportunities for kids in arts. We have great music programs. We have great technical education programs. We have an environmental charter school, place-based education program. So just really terrific things. We also highlight the places that we go out and look for grants, and so we're looking all the time to offset our operational costs by seeking out and employing grants that make sense. And the last thing I want to highlight from this year's newsletter is just a spotlight on our Blue Day Hall of Honor. A pretty unique fixture in the Cambridge School District, started in 2009 by Superintendent Ron Dayton and a group of Board of Educators really interested in lifting up the great work that's achieved by members of our community. And so there are three different buckets that you're going to see people inducted into the Hall of Fame, community service, distinguished alumni, and then distinguished athletes who have made pretty remarkable achievements locally, regionally, and at the state level in athletics. So we have 96 individuals who've been inducted into the Hall of Honor previously to this September. It continues to grow, and we honor those individuals in the varsity hallway between the two gyms at the high school where you can read and see more about all those community members, some of whom are in the room this evening. Lastly, before I open it up for a question or two from anybody, I like to put a plug in for the fact that we are heading into the biannual state budget. So that's a two-year budget, right, that occurs at the state level, planning for right now. And people who sit in my seat and Board of Educator seats like to help the community understand kind of the main asks of public educators right now. And those three things would be currently we're funded at 31% for special education programming in the state of Wisconsin. The commitment when that programming was established was to have two-thirds funding or over 60% of funding. So we're getting half of the funding that the legislature promised when those programs were enacted in the state. Obviously, that kind of resource would, you know, help us slow down our need to continue to come to our taxpayers to ask to continue the cost of our programming and operations. The second thing is, the last two years, we got $325 each year per student in an increase. We hadn't seen an increase for six years before that. We'd like to ask the legislature to add $100 more to that, to make it $425 per student, and that is only going to help us keep pace with current inflation. That's not going to exceed any place that we already are. And the third, I think the third point of interest for taxpayers is that in the community of Cambridge, this year we are spending $209,000 on vouchers for students who attend parochial schools outside of our district. So it's local Cambridge dollars that are paying for kids to attend schools in surrounding communities. The only parochial school in our community is the Utica School. And so that significant amount, $200,000, would certainly go a long way to not just balance our budget, but help us build up our reserves, which we're always striving to do. And so currently, the state of Wisconsin has two school systems going on that are getting funded. That would be public schools and the voucher system, which is funding taxpayer dollars into private parochial settings. And we just want to raise awareness, and whenever you get a chance to meet with a legislature member or have an opportunity with officials, to be able to have those talking points in your back pocket is really important.
Questions from the board?
Or for our board?
How are your staffing levels at the schools?
So we continue to struggle with our talent pool, meaning when we have an open position, we're not finding as many qualified candidates as we have in the past. In fact, for example, we're offering Spanish this year in a virtual setting, so we have a Spanish teacher who's synchronous, meaning like at the same time as the class is happening, but that person is in a different location, and we have an adult moderating that space for kids. So that would be an example of some of the challenges that we face. We also have shortages in some of our areas around custodial supports, paraprofessional supports, so that is a bit of a challenge. Thank you.
I was asked by somebody who couldn't be here this evening but will be listening in, and it had to deal with the Spanish program. Do you have enough Spanish teachers? And if you don't, do you have a plan to bring these personnel on?
And I think, Mark, too, it's just challenging. There's no candidates in the pool. We had two positions posted and zero applicants in those roles. So we have some support coming from community members who are willing to volunteer to do tutoring kinds of things, but in terms of recruiting and trying to find somebody who speaks a world language, it's definitely more challenging to do that. We go to recruitment fairs at, you know, the University of Wisconsin System Schools. We do outreach to the programs that we know offer, like Spanish education, and try to recruit that way, but there's certainly a lot of competition in driving distance of Cambridge. And so like many other industries, I think we just grapple to attract those individuals. But once we get them here, we typically have a really great retention rate among our employees, so they come and they stay for a very long time. We just have to get them here.
And last question, but this is more on something that I enjoyed personally, that was the Waterloo, Cambridge football game. And Cambridge won.
We did, mightily.
Yes. And you were working the kitchen.
Oh, yes.
I mean, you're in there.
It was concessions for the Hall of Honor game, too, so we all kind of take turns doing that sort of thing, but yes.
Okay.
I do believe I served you a hamburger that night, yes.
I made a point of going up. I think I actually had two.
Thank you for supporting us.
All right, you're welcome. And thank you for coming by this evening, along with the school board, and introducing yourselves. And, you know, we're just very pleased with the school system, and if there's anything that we can do here at the village, please keep us in mind.
Very good.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, I will now open this up to other public comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak about something that's either on the agenda or it's just something that came up? I see a young lady back there. If you can come up and give us your name, introduce yourself, please.
My name is Deborah Brown, and I'm on Canterbury Court in Cambridge, and I'm here representing both the Friends of the Cambridge Library and also as a citizen, if I could, please. And what I'd like to talk about is my concern about the cut in the proposed library budget. The library is an inclusive organization that has been a prominent part of our community and continues to only grow. It's a place where education, fun, learning, friendships, and communities grow. There are very few, if any, safe spaces where children can go to socialize, learn, read, or participate in weekly programs for free. It allows parents to reinforce the need and love of reading and continual learning, and again, participate in a variety of fun, family-engaging programs. It allows anyone who cannot afford or is able to get to a bookstore to enjoy just about any book that they choose for free and attend programs. And these free programs that I speak of are supported by the Friends of the Cambridge Library. We feel, in the Friends of the Cambridge Library, that our library is so important that we work very, very hard to support the programs and needs. Decreasing programs, activities, hours, and collections will be a complete disservice to your constituents and to our community. The library is so important to us that the Friends of the Cambridge Library recently granted $11,000 to assist for the 2025 budget deficit and program costs. But it is not the Friends' responsibility, nor can we continue this type of support. The money that we raise is to go for future needs of the library, such as expansion. Our library and the wonderful staff are the heart of this community. I urge you to look for other ways to decrease costs and allocate the funding that you would find to our library so that we can all thrive for the benefit of our community. Thank you. Should I sit down or go?
Yeah, any question? We don't usually have given takes.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone, sir? Come up, introduce yourself.
My name is Charles Cecil. I own The Plow Restaurant, which most of you know. Also own the building 101 West Main Street. I love Cambridge, and I'd like to say I love it so much that I now reside at 101 West Main Street, apartment number three. But the reason for being there and living there right now is my concern for the safety of Cambridge's Main Street, and I've tried to walk through every avenue that I can. So I have a concern for my neighbors, Kyle Harris and his two daughters, or daughter Brenly, which is six, and Daxton, which is five, Cory and Shawna Boss, who own the Upper Room, Josh and Amanda, that are due to be married this Saturday and are expecting their first child in January or February, and my neighbors, such as Tony, that is the Cambridge Hotel, the Ford Pharmacy, and the rest of the businesses that are on Main Street. My concern is that over the last two and a half years, I've tried to walk through as landlord and do the best I could to do what's right. I'm also the CEO of The Fiesel Firm, which is a disaster specialist company that for the last 20 years, I'll leave this in the back to kind of explain on that, but what I've done is building collapses, fires, and floods, from Hurricane Katrina to Boscoval floods, to downtown Madison, State Street, pretty much all over the country. I brought it up in my lease that these tenants were responsible for occupancy of that place, which would be a change of use if they wanted to use it as a warehouse instead of retail. And I have talked to the building inspectors from day one, which we had a building inspector and engineer come in to draw up plans for the building, which was supposed to be at the landlord's approval. The first set of engineering plans that were done for that thing I did not approve of, and they were inspected by the village inspection, and they were passed, and they actually moved the records in prior to that being done. Once the new plans were drawn, the old posts were pulled out, and they put in probably 75 six-inch posts instead of the 20 that were in there before that were these little bitty ones. There's approximately 200,000 to 300,000 records in that building. They're vinyl records, and I believe that I've walked through every door that I possibly can, so I'm here to just put it on public comment, that I'm very concerned that there's not a policy and a procedure for vacant buildings that's followed or can be done. I've gone to other Main Streets across America, and most of them, if a building's been vacant, would bring a building inspector in and a fire inspector and ask them what the use of the building proposed would be. Even the engineers that were brought on, they needed a floor plan to show where the weight would be put. Most of the weight that's in that building is in the back of the building where the construction wasn't. We had the village fire inspector come through a couple weeks ago, and she said there's nothing she can do because it's mainly building inspection. Building inspection says it's fire inspection.
All right, Charles, I'm going to have to cut because we only allow three minutes.
Well, she went eight.
She was an invited guest.
Okay. Well, this is my public record that I'm really concerned, and I'm bringing it to y'all's attention.
I'm not sure what your concern is, Charles.
That building across the street opened on Saturday.
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't understand what the concern is with the building. I'm not following what...
Collapse, and if there was a fire in that building, that it's adequately been addressed.
So you're the landlord of that building, are you not?
Yes.
So why aren't you addressing that with your tenant?
I have addressed it. I have attorneys involved and everybody involved. They send me back to building inspection and fire inspection.
Okay.
So the fire inspector came through and said that the boxes needed to be moved two feet from the ceiling and that the racks were too close. I asked her for a copy of the report, and I talked to her a little bit ago, and she doesn't see a problem with it, per se. I sent her a photo as of Saturday. The boxes are back up to the ceiling, and the racks and stuff like that, there's no egress, you know, there's supposed to be egress and stuff.
All right.
And I believe it's a change of use. If it's a warehouse, it's not permitted as what it is, and everyone's saying that's between me and my tenants. Well, I've exhausted every resource I have, and that's why I'm bringing it to y'all's attention, that I believe there is an imminent fire. They've done the structural stuff to some way, but if there was a fire in that building, just ask yourself that question. If there was a fire in that building, what would it do to this community, and how is it enforced? It's not furniture anymore. It's not clothing anymore. It's vinyl records, 200,000 of them. And when they burn, they produce gases that are not like furniture and other stuff.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this in the back if anybody wants it, and my phone number's on it as well.
Are there any other individuals that would like to speak at this time? Sir, if you can come up, introduce yourself.
My name is Cody Garcia. I work for the...
We can't hear you back, too.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everybody. My name is Cody Garcia. I work for the Department of Public Works here in Cambridge, and I wanted you just briefly speak on the Agenda Item 7H, which is more specifically staffing and replacement of FTE position vacated with the resignation of the Public Works Director. The Department of Public Works is feeling the pressure of not having formal leadership and being short-staffed. This is already resulting in reduced services and productivity. The possibility of an interim director has been raised and would greatly be appreciated by DPW staff. As I have previously stated to the Audit and Finance Committee, all DPW staff are currently onboard to act as interim directors if needed, but only if they are fairly compensated. For reference, DPW Director Todd Lord was paid approximately $32 an hour. Our sister community, Deerfield, is currently dealing with a similar situation. On October 17th, the Cambridge News and Deerfield Independent published an article describing this. To summarize it, the Village of Deerfield currently does not have a village administrator. Instead, they have appointed their Director of Public Works to serve as the interim administrator while they continue to search for a permanent one. While he is serving as the interim administrator, a pay raise is being provided to account for his extra duties. Deerfield also provided a pay raise to a village employee that acted as interim village clerk during the recent search to fill that position as well. I raise this article to point out that our sister community is doing what it can to compensate its employees for the extra burden it is placing on their shoulders. I hope that Cambridge chooses to do the same. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cody. Any other individuals wish to share a comment at this time? Fair warning, okay.
Do I need to sit in that chair?
Tony, we would like it if you would. You introduce yourself. Melissa will make sure that this is...
All right. I'm Toby Boncatro. Not a resident in Cambridge, but I own the Cambridge Inn on Main. I come here speaking on behalf of the folks that work in the water department. I think a lot of us are aware of what happened a year or a year and a half ago, where we had a water main leak that flooded a lot of our buildings. That's one of the largest investments I have, and I did it in the spirit of rebuilding the economic community on Main Street. So hearing that we're all in a little bit of a pickle trying to figure out how to make our books balance and how to make the community work together and actually have a balanced budget, the night of that flood, that gentleman that just spoke and two other folks that work for the water department were in my basement till midnight, helping us run pumps and pump water that had nothing to do with my building that I had completely refurbished, which was booked that night, having all the guests checking in while I'm pumping the city's water out the backside of my hotel. So I just think it's important to consider that the amount of businesses that are on Main Street, all of us are giving 130%, whether it's Cathy in the Market, whether it's Kaleidoscope Fabrics, whether it's the Art Hub. All these places are run by people that are giving more than they really get out. You do it because it's a sense of community. I can assure you that nobody is making a fair living wage owning a business on Main Street. It's what we do with our heart to make Cambridge what it is, and you have to back us up with the right amount of infrastructure to make sure that it doesn't tumble on top of us because of infrastructure that is not provided for what we would expect as building owners, business owners, and how much energy we're giving back into the community. I don't know what would have happened to my building had we not had that water department there and seven pumps, and, I mean, the amount of water that flowed through it was over 800 gallons every 20 minutes for a while there, because we started to meter it and see if we were even catching the rate. It was those water guys that saved my back, and that building, I mean, it's insured, but I think everybody saw what we took on there. You can't just let stuff like that fall apart, and you can't maintain occupancy in these buildings unless you have infrastructure to support and owner to say, "I'll invest in it. I will be there because I trust in the Village of Cambridge to defend the dollars I've invested."
Thank you.
That's it.
Appreciate it, Tony.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Sir?
One last one for you.
Well, we don't know. We'll see. You can introduce yourself.
Jay Ames, Department of Public Works employee. I just want to say a few things about the two issues, the budget being one, and also I happened to catch a glimpse of your garbage contract. I think you need to look at that garbage contract. 5% increases on a garbage contract when CPI is only looking to be to 1.5% is a little bit extravagant. Also, when they're charging you fuel charges, basically it looks like on everything over $2 a gallon on diesel fuels, you need to go back and look at that contract. They need to do better for you. You may think it's a pass-through, but the first year of that contract, you're the ones that are paying the increase each year. So you're always behind on getting your money back on that. The second thing is on the budget. I'd like to thank the Finance Committee for all the hard work they did. They went through, they did their due diligence. They went through everything line by line. A thankless job, a difficult job. I'd like to, hopefully you approve what the Finance Committee has proposed. Thank you for keeping part-time employees. That's a big benefit. We can't go out and work on Highway 12 and trim trees without at least three, sometimes four, of us, so we have to steal people from the water department to come help us do some, depending on where we're working on those roads. The other thing I'd say is you're stuck in a hard place because of what previous boards did to you, to this budget. I hope whenever a developer's agreement or anything comes forward in the future that things are looked at closer. Right now, the village receives no compensation for all the work we do out there. We're plowing snow, we're mowing, we've got retention ponds, we have all this work to do out there, and you don't get a dime for it. I hope when things come forward, we say, number one, how are we paying to maintain this stuff? This is really super unfortunate that the Public Works Department's in this position and you're in this position. I don't plan on staying for the whole meeting unless you want me to, unless you think there'll be questions in the line.
Well, we don't have a Public Works update.
And we are not deciding the budget today.
Okay.
The budget decision will be made at a future meeting.
Okay, okay.
Today, we're just considering the recommendation of the law.
From the committee.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay, and Cody, for what you're doing. Okay, last call. Anybody else would like to speak at this time or comment? Okay, we're going to close that portion of the meeting, and we are going to move on. Item five, approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion necessary? Okay, here are none. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Okay, I'm going to move into reports. Right before this meeting, we had the Historic Preservation Committee, and in an interest to make this move along a little better, I think it's best if we keep the committee, but we are going to have an ad hoc group meet to kind of go through some of the concerns with the water tower. Remember, what we're trying to do is save the water tower that's up here on North Street, or South Street, I'm sorry, South Street. And we do not want this to cost the residents of Cambridge a dime. So we need to find out if it's better to tear it down, or if it is to leave it up, but what do we need to do to have it updated, tuck-pointed, or there's no tuck-pointing because there's no brick, but filling in the cracks and then painting it and, you know, bringing in... and, you know, bringing in funding sources. So, we're going to continue to do that. We're just going to be doing this on an ad hoc basis with the committee, if that's all right? Okay? All right, so that's the news that I have for...
Is that committee looking for grants?
It's going to be, you know, funding, sure. It will be. Okay. Library Board, Paula?
Let's see. We talked about the 2025 budget, the strategic plan. One of the big things is the board expansion. We do need to have two representatives from Dane County and Cambridge. So, two representatives from there. Right now, we are not in compliance with our board. So, we do need to get, so if anybody's interested in being on the library board, please either stop into the library and talk to Samantha. And she's the director, and she'll be able to give you information on applying for those board positions. Let's see. Samantha put together a really great 2023 year-in review. She's going to start doing the same thing for 2024. But it was a really cool thing to see everything that the library did in 2023 and all of the plans that she has for 2024. We talked about what we're going to ask the foundation for, for grants. And I think that's about, I think that's about it.
Okay. Questions for Paula? All right, thank you. We're good. I kind of already talked about the Historic Preservation Committee, so we're going to move past that. Village Office Updates, Lisa?
Obviously, budget has been a lot of our focus, as well as elections. The in-person voting started today. We probably had about 60 people vote in person today. We've sent out around 200 absentee ballots already. So, those and some transition things have kind of taken up the bulk of our time over the last couple of weeks.
You have usually, today's the first day of the voting upstairs, correct?
Yeah.
We don't anticipate that that's going to continue on at that rate.
I think it's going to. We got notices from the state today. The state system was extremely sluggish. It's high voting throughout the state, and I do think with this election, it is going to continue through next Friday.
500 votes?
Cambridge has an incredible percentage of turnout for voting.
Election like this, we usually have over 90% voting.
Yeah. Yeah.
It is, 90%.
We are always higher than the state average.
Wow. That's some pretty good stuff. All right, well, we'll keep at it. Questions for Lisa? Okay, let's move into Treasuries Report and Bills. We'll start with Bills here, Lisa.
The first round was in the amount of $39,062.91. The second was $14,149.23, for a total of $53,214.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $53,212.14.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Concerns, issues, questions? I have one, Lisa. I noticed under MSA Professional Services that we were going to be paying to MSA $1,315 for the Spring Alley. Are we keeping track of that later on?
It's all documented, yeah.
Yeah, we can swing that one out of our operating and maybe a capital budget, so we can reimburse ourselves? Okay.
If we go out for a loan, we should be able to reimburse for...
All right. Okay, given how tight things are. All right, any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Franklin, Blackwood.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Cracklow?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. Okay, bills are passed. Is there anything else that you would like to share with us?
Nope, I think we'll be talking about stuff later.
Okay. All right, moving into new business, an Eagle Scout project. Sarah Bernini.
Hi. My name is, sorry. My name is Sarah Bernini. I am senior at Cambridge High School and a life scout with Troop 1741. I'm currently working on my Eagle Scout project, and this is my first step in like getting approval from the board, so then I can get approval from the council, and then I can finally build it. My plan for my project is to make fishing line and hook disposal units that would go with the fishing ponds. They're made out of PVC pipes, and they collect like broken or old fishing lines and hooks, so they don't end up like in the ponds or in the grass and damage nature in any way, shape, or form. The reason why I chose this project is because I've always enjoyed fishing, and I want future generations to also be able to have the opportunity to go fishing while also preserving nature and making sure it's still in like good shape and not causing any damage to it. I am currently talking with a few different people and groups about the care and maintenance of the project, so probably biannually, they would have to be emptied out. And that is something that I'm working on organizing right now. Hopefully, by one group, if not multiple, that just rotate through the duties. And then there is no need for me like financed in any way. It's going to be privately funded. The only thing I need is the approval to build them and place them around the ponds. There would probably be about six units that would be placed, five or six, just, yeah, around the fishing ponds here in Cambridge.
What would this look like?
So, it's going to be a three-inch PVC pipe, so in diameter, and it's going to be about this tall. It's got like a hook shape at the end. Yeah, so you put the fishing line in, and at the bottom, there's a cap that you can easily untwist to pull it, everything out, and then twist it back up to make it sealed.
What kind, are you going to put signage up so people know what's there?
Yes.
Because if I saw it, I'm like, what was that for?
I'm planning on hopefully making like a poster to put on like the bulletin board. And then each unit will have either a sticker or a sign that'll go with it that explains what it is and the purpose of it.
All right.
I'm going to ask a question, but not of you. I'm going to ask it of Cody and Jay. Gentlemen, can you see any concerns about this being out by the ponds?
How many did you say?
Five or six.
Which ponds are you thinking?
The fishing ponds by the lion's club.
Yes, there's three of them.
Just kind of spaced around between the three.
You may have difficulty with the one that is closest to the creek.
Okay.
That one is pretty difficult to get to.
All right.
The other two, which are connected, would be no problem.
All right. I haven't gone out and like landscaped it out yet, but just I will be going out there and kind of planning on where to put them.
I don't think we would have any issue with it.
I suggest just put up as many as you think you need. Don't put more than is necessary.
Okay, and then you're going to clean these out while you're here at school, and then hopefully somebody...
Yeah, so part of my job is like planning out the project is to make sure it follows all the points of the scout law, which also include scout law and oath, which include being thrifty, conservative nature, and kind of most things along those lines. I could recite it, but I don't think there's the need for that. And then it's also not only planning out the project, but the maintenance of it after the fact, so that it could stand for who knows how many years without me needing to continuously supervise it.
Okay.
Jay and Cody, would you want Sarah to just touch base with you guys to let you know where she's planning to place them? Okay, so can you add that into your, if we approve? Can you add that as a step into your...
If I could get your guys' contact after the meeting?
I can send it to you, Sarah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, great.
All right. Well, how do we feel about Sarah's project?
I would like to make a motion to approve Sarah's Eagle Scout project, which will enhance the ponds area.
Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Do we have any concerns, questions, issues?
What's the timeline?
Yes, so I am hoping to have everything done by the end of the year. After, I'm hoping for approval here, and after that, I will go, hopefully in the next week or two, I will be going to council to get that approval as well. As soon as I have that, I can start building the project. I don't, like the actual building of the project, I don't think should take more than a day, because it's going to be a medium, small, medium group, six to 10 people, I'm guessing. And we'll be working together to assemble and build those. And so, I'm hoping November, early December, it'll be done.
Okay, great.
And this is all in furtherance of your Eagle Scout?
Yes.
Okay, so you're working on becoming an Eagle, are you a, what is it? Tenderfoot?
A life scout.
Life scout?
Yes.
Okay. It's been a long time since I wasn't scouting.
It's been a long time since I have too.
Well, we've got a motion and a second. We had some questions. Do we have any more? All right, I will call the matter to vote. Roll call, please.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Cracklow?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right, it's been approved.
All right.
Good luck, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Item C, LRS Renewal Trash and Recycling Services. Lisa, you want to start off with this one?
We do have a representative here from LRS, and, yep, it did kind of sneak up on us, the renewal. Now, we had talked about it a while ago, and so we have been in contact. They provide us with a five-year extension. And correct me if I'm wrong, the extension, if we so desired next year to go off our contract with a certain timing for an RFP...
We're proposing a five-year extension, so no.
Okay, no, so it is a straight, okay. So, I think we'll hand it over, and, yeah.
My name is Justin. I am the Municipal Services Coordinator for LRS, and obviously, I'm here to discuss the possibility of a contract extension. Shared about a month ago now, a contract extension proposal. Sounds like we've already touched on a couple of items for this, so looking to execute a five-year extension with you guys. As of right now, we would be looking to keep all of the services that you're currently receiving the same with this extension. We would be locking the annual increases at a 5% increase as opposed to your original contract is a 4% increase, so just a marginal increase from the original contract. But just to hint on that a little bit more and kind of go a little bit deeper into detail. I mean, this contract was entered into pre-COVID. Everybody's aware of the financial struggles that came along with COVID, and that is no different in the waste and recycling industry. Disposal costs have increased. The price of equipment, trucks especially, has gone up significantly over that time period. You know, I think we've done a really good job and established a really good relationship with your community over the last five years from this original contract. I pulled a report in preparation, and there were less than 20 documented customer inquiries the entire year of 2024 thus far, which, given the size of your community, is a very minimal number, as far as that ranges from anything to issues with bulk item collection, issues with, you know, trash misses, recycling misses, things of that nature. So, I think we're doing a really good job of staying on top of those things. Obviously, we work in a lot of the other surrounding communities of Cambridge. We service Village Rockdale, service Deerfield, Koshkane, Waterloo. The list kind of goes on and on, and, you know, we've got really good operational support. You know, we've got our Monona office and our Janesville office, which are, it's kind of a nice center point to meet in the middle in Cambridge. So, we've got operations managers that are extremely experienced and know the area well. I'm in our Janesville office most of the time unless I'm out traveling, but that's where our customer service center is located. So, I'm in contact with those individuals, you know, on a pretty much daily basis. So, if there's any issues that get escalated up to me, you know, I'm there and I'm working with our operations team and our dispatch team to get those handled as quickly as we can. So, I think this is a very advantageous offer for both parties here. You know, obviously, change is difficult, so it's, you're going to experience some difficulties if you were to look to another provider. Obviously, they would have to submit a proposal with their pricing, and I think they'd be very hard-pressed, given recent proposals that we've participated in and recent contracts that we've seen be executed to find a lower rate than what you're receiving here. So, hopefully, you guys have had a chance to review the current contract and the extension proposal, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have. One thing that was mentioned earlier, the fuel surcharge. So, currently, you're already being charged the fuel surcharge, so that table remains the same. So, there's a rebate if the price of diesel fuel were to drop below $2 a gallon, and then there's the surcharge that's added on a monthly basis based on the number of units that are serviced. If the price of diesel fuel goes above $3.25, I think the last time that I looked at it, we were sitting somewhere around $3.70, $3.75 a gallon.
All right, questions?
I will just add one thing. I know some of you were on the board probably the last time we went through the RFP. As Justin said, we have had very few complaints since we have had them. With our old, we were probably receiving 10 to 15 complaints a week. We have missed, whole blocks would be missed, you know, one side of the block. We had a lot of complaints, and since we have used them, we rarely get complaints in the office. So, you know, we, in the administrative side, have been very happy with the service that we've received since switching over. They worked very well when we switched over, the giving residents the options of the sizes of their containers and so forth. But we've been very happy with it.
When was the last time we did an RFP?
What was this, was the original contract, five years to five years ago?
So, that one entered effect January 1st of 2020.
Yeah.
And how were their rates versus the others at that time?
They were the lowest at the time.
Does the contract expire?
The end of this year.
So, do we have time to do an RFP?
Possibly. I'm trying to think if in the original contract, there was a date to that.
It was dated September 25th.
Yeah. I don't know.
Justin, there were two issues that were raised, and you kind of dealt with one of them, which was the fuel surcharge. But what about the idea that the, you're looking for a 5% increase, but yet the Consumer Price Index is probably half of that?
I think the consumer...
Is this negotiable at all?
Yeah. I mean, I think that a lot of our current customers, so this is the way that we build out all of our contracts with that fixed increase, and I think that that probably ended up biting us in the butt a little bit, and because of COVID. You know, there were contracts that, because of all of the increases that we experienced in doing our business, the way of building those contracts out that way was not very advantageous to us. I know there were other haulers that, in their agreements, you know exactly what your rates are going to be for that first year, but then they base the rest of the rates for the remainder of the contract on CPI. And obviously, like we saw with COVID, you never actually know what's going to happen. And I know the CPI, back when COVID was prevalent, was upwards of that 7%, 8%. So, you would be experiencing a much higher increase that way, going with the CPI. I think that a lot of our current customers enjoy the way that our pricing is built out with this fixed increase, because it helps them with being able to budget and see exactly what their rates are going to be. and see exactly what their rates are gonna be regardless of what's happening in the state of the economy.
So the rates we're currently paying for 24 compared to the rates for 25 in the proposal, what's the difference?
You're currently paying $11.78 a unit. So it is, $7.07 is what we're charging for refuse and then it's a $4.71 for recycling. So that's increasing to $7.42 for the first year of an extension for waste and then another $4.95 for recycling to bring the total to $12.37 a unit.
And is that 5% or?
Yeah.
Would you consider a, or do we want to consider a three-year contract versus a five-year contract?
I can definitely take that information back to, to the team and we can review that and see if that changes the, the rates that we're offering.
And I don't know if we just, if, you know, because we didn't have a lot of runway, although, although, again, I doubt there's gonna be anybody cheaper and the service has been really good. And I, I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, if we just take the contract or if you're uncomfortable taking the contract, I'd want to, I'd want to see if we could maybe take it, but a three or a four year if you're concerned about the five year.
How do we feel?
And then, and then Lisa, are we right now passing the full costs on to our constituents?
Not the full cost. I think we're a little shy of the full cost. And do we do 125 on the tax roll, I believe, or $126?
And so the, the 1237, that's per month per household? Is that what the 1237 represents? Sorry, I lost my calculator.
About 145.
What was that?
About 145 annually, that's where you're going.
Do you know what other communities do? Do, is it a complete cost that's put on the resident or is it?
It fluctuates.
Does it?
Yeah, it's different to a different ways. There were some changes in state law and I'm not real familiar to allow you to be able to and over the years, we did increase from $75 to 90 to, you know, 100. So we have gradually increased.
I guess I'd like to see a three-year proposal. I think it'd be fairer for both parties. I'm sure you guys took it a little bit in the shorts when COVID hit with our high inflation and a shorter term would be, I think, fairer to both parties. Just my opinion.
Okay. You want to make a motion to that effect? To have them consider a three-year contract instead of a five?
Wouldn't really be anything in front of us to, I mean, that, that's more of an administrative thing to see if they can come back with a three-year, can you come back just with a three-year versus five-year number?
Yeah.
So that we have this five-year.
I'll take that information back to the team and I'll, I'll figure out what, what rates we can offer for the three-year extension as opposed to a five.
Okay, and then we can consider that at the next meeting?
I can't guarantee that those rates are gonna be lower than what's in the five-year, but I will take that information back.
I hear ya.
All right, if you can do that and then you can come before us again next meeting.
Yeah.
I think we'll be able to vote on this.
Do you be able to let me know when the next meeting is?
Yeah, November 12th.
I unfortunately have another meeting I have to attend on November 12th.
I, I don't know that he would have to be here for the next meeting, do you think?
I think if you guys would have the information too and if you have any questions once I get the additional information sent over.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't think you'd have to come to the next one because we can decide based on the numbers that you give us which way we'd want to go.
I'll pass out a couple of my cards and then you can just leave them out. Thank you guys for your time.
Yes, thank you, thank you for actually doing a good job for the community, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
I, I remember all the complaints we used to be getting from the other.
I'd be terrible and it really has been wonderful working with him. Like you said, more often the phone calls are questions about the bulk, bulk pickup or, you know, complaints per se.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on, item D, new business, Jay Weiss, measuring of trees. This is his annual release?
Yeah, just took the release that we had done last year, updated it. So he's again asking to go around and measure the trees that are in the terraces and.
Okay, so this is pretty much what we had last year and I think Jane was, looked at that, so. Okay, anybody want to make a motion to approve this?
Did you have any comments, Lisa?
I was going to, has he shared information from his best measurements with you now?
Public Works?
Jay Weiss, when he measures the, is he sharing that information?
I don't know if I've seen anything yet this year.
Because I think part of it was it's supposed to be shared with the village staff and the new village forester.
So I could, I, I'll make a motion to approve the, to approve Jay Weiss for measuring the trees in the terrace and on public property provided, on the contingency that he provides the 2024 measurement numbers to the Public Works Department.
And he signs the agreement.
Pardon me?
And he signs the agreement.
Well, right, right, and he signs the agreement, yes.
Okay.
And the 2025 numbers once they're done?
Yeah, I, I thought that was, if that's not written in the agreement, then.
Yeah, okay.
I thought it's already written in here. It's under seven to transmit public records of any records generated under this agreement to the village administrator and acknowledges.
We should probably figure out if it's an issue or not before we make an issue.
And acknowledges the subject to the Wisconsin, I mean, it's already in, in the document.
It is, I just want to make sure that we get it.
It's actually happening.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's actually happening. So it's just another incentive to get the information.
We're asking for it if we don't have it.
Yeah, we got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Wait, 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 one thing. You said this was from last year, right?
Yeah.
We need to verify that he still has the proper insurance on file before he does this.
I'll amend my motion to include with verification of proper insurance.
All right, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, anything else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good luck, Jay, I'll get that. Moving on, there was our discussion on public comment. Bill, did you have anything that you wanted to mention?
Yeah, in the interest of timeliness tonight, you know, this isn't a item that comes up too often. I would ask we defer it till a December meeting, till I can get through with the budget.
Okay, all right, are we okay with that, if we do that? We'll just put that in here as staff, future agenda items?
Yeah.
All right, okay. All right, committee assignments, Paula?
It had come to my attention just because I kept seeing Chris at every meeting that we've had. But it, I wasn't sure that we had kind of equity on committee assignments across the board. And so I, I grabbed a highlighter in my document and I, I took a look at all of the, all of the assignments that everyone had and I had identified that Chris actually did have eight assignments to everybody else's three, four, five. Mark had six, but Mark goes to everything anyway, so I kind of just left him out of this whole thing because Mark just goes. So I wanted to propose that we make a couple of changes. One would be, would be seeing if Bill, and actually adding Bill and Brian. If they were the ones who had the least amount. So I was wondering if Bill and Brian would be willing to take some of the burden off of Chris and have him, have Brian assigned to water and sewer and have Bill assigned to personnel. If we assign Bill to personnel, we would need to consider then also who the chair of that would be, whether it be one of the existing people or we had Bill. I did talk about making Brian licensing chair, but I do realize that he is already chair of the Economic Development Committee. I kind of missed that one, so I don't think we'd have to make him chair of licensing so that we could have everybody have one chair and one, and then have a little more equitable distribution of committee assignments. So, and then I said if, if need, I could take on chair of Water and Sewer Committee. I was on Water and Sewer Committee, actually before I even became on the board, I was, I was the public citizen on the Water and Sewer Committee. So I'm kind of familiar with, with what's going on there as well. So thoughts?
I appreciate it. I'm, I'm actually starting a, a new position at my, my job and I'm starting a master program in January and it seems to me like the Fire and EMS Commission is taken as like a full-time job. So I, I need, I'm, I'm burning both ends of the candle and I just need a little help. And as opposed to just waving the white flag and saying to hell with it, I'm, I'm off the board, I would, I would rather go this route. So if I could get some help, I would appreciate it.
Okay, all right. So you're, you're proposing here, Paula, that Chris resigned from personnel and we're gonna add Bill. What are we looking at for chair here? Is this?
And, and I don't know, Bill or, or Kristen, if either one of you would want to take the chair position?
Just talking about that and it doesn't matter to either of us, you know, however.
However you guys want it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to make Bill the chair of personnel.
I'll second. All right, okay, well, with that, why don't we take these in order? We've got a motion and a, well.
Yeah, that's okay, we can motion each one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Motion and second, do we have a motion and second?
Yeah.
All right, for Bill to join personnel and be chair of that committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then nay? Voting on yourself, can you vote on yourself?
Yes.
Otherwise, Mark, you wouldn't be able to vote at all.
Yeah, all right.
Noted.
Moving on, Water and Sewer, Chris, you're off, Paula's the chair and we're gonna add Brian. All right.
So I'll make a motion to add Brian on to Water and Sewer as well as Paula Hollenbeck to move into the chair position.
All right, okay, we got a motion and a second.
And has anybody talked to Brian?
Nope. He's been told that that's his new position, yeah.
But he'll have plenty of support there with Paula, who's had vast experience and as well as Ted and Steve.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, and then lastly, licensing.
I would say, I would take no action on that because I was trying to even things out thinking Brian wasn't a chair, but he is. He's the chair of, I forgot, he was the chair of the Economic Development, so I missed that one.
Okay.
So, all right.
All right, good. And that'll teach Brian and maybe even Chuck, they better make these meetings and get voted in on other things. Treasure position.
Can I ask a quick question? I just thought I had overheard that you might have passed on the questions, referrals and future agenda items to another meeting. So as it relates to the room tax ordinance discussion, be scheduled by Pat. Is that moved on then? I just thought I heard you say something about moving it to another meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was in the future.
I'm here, I just want to make sure I stay on top of your thoughts on the room tax.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda today.
That will be on the next Economic Development Committee agenda, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Then I'll dismiss myself.
Okay, thanks, yep. Treasure position, I guess we're gonna start with you here, Lisa.
Just need direction from you guys where it, one, you know, two posts. I included in the packet the last posting that we did for the position as well as the job description. So just want direction, the post, how to post, salary ranges, so forth.
I'm fine with that posting. I'm wondering if we make the salary range like 58 to 64?
I think we have to.
Because based on the experience that we're asking for, what, what were you gonna say, Chris?
A lot of this is contingent upon our item 7H.
Well, what we, what were we, what was, what was Tammy's salary?
When she left, it was roughly 65.3.
Okay, so we were making, we budgeted for 65.3.
Okay.
So. And I'm saying, yeah, I'm saying, yeah.
I think you're gonna have a hard time on the lower end finding anybody that can do all that.
So do I.
Real hard thing.
So do we want to make it 60 to 65? Okay, and since we have it budgeted at 65, it would be the high end that we could look at, at this point? Okay, so can you make that change, Lisa?
Well, we're going into that time of the year where we're gonna be talking, we'll get through our budget, but then we'll be talking to auditors here shortly.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be another year where we'll get audit late because some of them didn't give them the information. We'll figure it out.
So you want to move this to, from the starting salary of, what do we say, 60 to 65?
No, starting, yeah, 60 to 65. So from 50, from 54 to 64. And I think based on the kind of experience that we're asking for, I mean, I think that seems easily reasonable.
All right, and.
Lisa, could you sometime reach out to our auditors? Sometimes they are aware of people that are looking for positions.
Yeah, I can check.
And then also they think of the, of the salary range based on what they're seeing in the marketplace.
I mean, Chris, you brought up the point and this is part of the discussion. Do we want to be voting on this right now before we get into it or do we want to wait until after?
I think we can, if we find a really great candidate, we can always determine whether we need to offer them more money to get them.
We are not voting on the budget tonight either, so.
We, we really need to get something posted.
All right.
And I guess posting locations, we can do the Clerks Network, the Treasures, the League. Those are free postings and people in the field. In the past, we have done some newspaper, but if we want to forego that and keep it with the organizations.
I would start, I would do the organizations, see if, see what we get from there.
Anybody care to make a motion then?
I don't know. We need a motion, I just need a direction on what.
And did you see any changes that you thought were necessary for the position description? I know one thing that we had talked about, and I don't know how, if it's listed into this way, is that the Treasurer would actually be doing the coding and, you know, switching who's doing which, what you have Judy doing now and having, because both of our past Treasurers have said, "I wish I was doing, you know, the one thing, and Judy may be doing the other thing, because I don't feel like I'm on top of the day-to-day."
And it does have Maintain Accounts Payable and Accounts Receivable System in the job description.
So that would be part of that? Okay, great.
Okay, so Lisa's going to run with this. Any other questions?
I almost want to, I want to, almost want to do like a full-court press and like, put it out in the paper as well, because we do need to get this position filled.
Who looks in the paper for jobs anymore, Chris? Nobody does. Nobody looks in the paper for jobs.
Is there another online forum that we've used in the past that? I don't know if we have, I know the main three organizations that have been our main focus.
And the key, yeah, and the key with the main three organizations is they're associated with municipal government. And so we want somebody who has municipal government experience, so they're the people who are going to be looking on those job boards. So I think that would probably be why that's more advantageous for us to do it there.
Didn't we use Indeed one year, and we didn't, maybe it wasn't here, maybe it was with somebody else, and ran nationally, and there were no, no comments at all, nothing. I mean, so I agree, that's got to be somebody in this particular.
I don't think it's that big a requirement to have someone have governmental experience, but I would leave it in for the first pass, but if we don't get any candidates, I would take that out of the requirements and then run General Ed. It can, I mean, you have it in college, you take governmental accounting, fund accounting, it's not that much different than doing a financial consolidation on a business combination.
Okay, so maybe that, not that part of it, but the job is also like the Deputy Clerk and things like that, and.
Love the limit worksheet, some.
They can learn that, though.
They can.
I'm just saying, if we don't get a good candidate.
Guess we don't have anyone.
You know, we should broaden the search.
Consider anybody.
First, it's taken six months to find someone.
Well, let's just start off, and then give it 30 days, and see what we have for Inquire, and then bring it back for.
And I, there was no end date, it was until filled, so.
Okay. All righty, that takes care of that. Okay, Audit and Finance Update and Recommendations, Item 7H. Who's taking this?
So the Audit and Finance Committee has met twice, had met twice. One of the meetings was really centered around, what can we do for 2024 to sort of address where we are with the budget for, that we have this year? And then the second one looked at the 2025 budget, and we did a line item. So the first one that we had about 2024, the things that the, that the Board came up with was, or had, or talked about, the Audit and Finance Committee, sorry, came up with was, first of all, recognizing that some of our shortfalls over the last few years in the General Fund is because we've been using General Fund dollars to fund capital items. And Mark mentioned that earlier today, when he talked about, you know, Spring Street Alley, and making sure that we have.
Clear delineation.
Right, clear delineation, and being able to pay, if we do that, making sure we take out a loan for those capital fund items. Because taking out those loans also impacts our levy limit and what we put in that levy limit worksheet. So it all kind of ties up to those different, to those different areas. So making sure that we're using, that we're taking out loans versus using General Fund dollars is something that I think we need to be really aware of moving forward. The outside of public safety costs, which is our biggest expense, and that would be Fire, EMS, and Police, outside of those, the next largest areas really is staff salary. And so for this year, what we are recommending for the remainder of this year is that there is, that we establish that no overtime except for emergencies like snowplow plowing. I could say oil, water main break, but that's the Water and Sewer budget anyway, so it's not coming against our General Fund. The other thing that I would want to include in that with Tammy leaving would be Election Day, in order to have, because now we have only two staff to cover Election Day instead of three, so most, and Vicki is hourly, so, is Vicki going to be available?
Yeah.
Okay, so Vicki would most likely be into overtime that day, so that might be the exception for that as well. We also are recommending that we don't replace the FTE position that was vacated by the Public Works Director, at least particularly through the end of the year, so that can be a cost savings for us for both the benefits that, you know, last quarter of benefits, as well as salary, that could be some from. And then, one of the things we recommended is to review the staffing for the two part-time employees. That was one of the things that we talked about as well. And at this point in time, I don't think we recommend making any changes in their employment, just based on, and again, we heard from some staff here, particularly the Public Works, losing that FTE position, we're already thin. Now that Tammy's gone, you know, we're short an FTE in the office as well, so reducing or getting rid of those two part-time positions, I think is not beneficial for the village at this point.
So what's in the budget that's in the packet for those two items, the two part-time positions and the Director of Public Works?
So in what's, what's in the budget for 2025?
Yes.
So can we, can we put a pin in that until I get to 25? I just wanted to address the 2024 things first. Okay. And then, we're recommending that there's no discretionary spending through the end of the year. So if, oh, there's a sale on paper, let's go ahead and buy reams of paper. No, we'll forego that and only buy reams of paper if we need reams of paper. You know, so things like that, from a discretionary perspective. And then, and then the number four really dealt with like next year's budget as well, 2025 budget, and that was instituting a Friends of the Village, creative funding for constituent-facing items like flowers on Main Street and.
Flags.
And flags, and.
And.
And, you know, those types of items, to see if we could have a volunteer from the community coordinate donations to pay for those types of items instead of coming out of our budget. So those are the recommendations. I think the only thing that might need motions might be related to the no overtime except for emergencies, and then the no discretionary spending for the remainder of the year. I think those two things, probably we'd want to have a motion.
Can I add a third item to that?
What third item?
Would be not using outside consultants without express approval from this Board.
They, I don't know that we'd do that anyway, though.
We have people from.
Like who?
Eilers or Eilers, whatever their name is, and.
But the, but the.
We've never approved anyone coming in here, since I've been on the Board.
Well, we've approved MSA.
Okay, I'm saying no more unless we approve whatever it is they're going to come into before they come in. And if they do come in, we do it video, not pay them drive time to come in.
Oh, I'll agree with that part.
Okay.
The drive time part.
But why can't we expressly approve any spend, any, before we just call them up and say, "Come in"?
My only concern of that, Bill, would be for legal. Because, because staff is going to, Lisa, the Administrator, is going to need to have some conversations in a timely manner with Jane that I don't think, that one coming before us first would, would, it just might get sticky.
I mean, we spend a lot of money on legal, just sit through.
Well, we're looking at strategies here for the remainder of 2024.
No, I know, that's what I'm talking about, 324.
All right.
I will mention, like, the engineers, they're currently working on a lot of projects. Are we?
No, because we've already approved the budget for those projects.
So that's, but things like, you know, Springwater Alley, they're working with the DOT on the 134 project. Am I saying, stop work on these unless?
No, because we've already approved monies for those.
That, that's where I'm.
Well, we should, maybe we should get a list of all those and review them, make sure we agree we want to continue those projects, now we don't have any money.
Well, we don't have a choice with the bridge.
That we're not paying for.
That we're not paying for?
No.
134 over the.
134.
Lagoon Road? Is that what you're talking about, Lagoon Road, or the stoplight?
What's wrong with just getting a list and reviewing them, Paul?
Nothing, I was just trying to think what they were built.
Yeah, there's, you know, 134, we're working on, Melsters site, we're working on closing out Westgate, the apartments and the vineyards. There's a lot of different projects that are in the works that I would need to know, are we shutting these down until further notice, or telling them, "Don't submit to the DOT unless," you know, Board's already said, "Submit 134 to DOT," but stop any work on, you know, it's, the, they're coming.
You're saying next one.
Sewer will have the retention bonds.
Well, I was saying.
We've already.
It's worth a review of the existing ones, and what's left to spend, and what's the benefit, to understand it. Not just auto-spend, without, I don't understand them all, and I don't understand how much more is left to spend. Do you, anyone else in the Board, understand?
But when we approve them, we approve them to a dollar amount. So.
And we can never go back.
I think part of this has to do with, you're correct, Paula, that we do approve it to a dollar amount, but there's always, there's always outside entities, right? There's always the dime amount, plus we have the MSA charge for their consulting, or we have the Eilers' charge for their, whatever they, you know, wherever they are as part of the dance. The lawyer, you know, yeah, I don't, I don't think we necessarily want to hamstring our Administrator from doing her job, but also, we need to be able to rein in some of the charges where, maybe you can do a Google search instead of calling Jane, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. You know, I just, you know, I.
Yeah, but Bill's Google search directly conflicted with what I found for something.
Right.
So, I mean, sometimes you have to go to the lawyers if it's a legal item.
Right, and I get it. But is that, is that kind of where you're at, where it's like, okay, and?
And how important is it to go to the lawyer? Maybe we just live without it.
Utilize legal municipalities and their legal minds that are there that are kind of free.
They won't work on individual projects, there's just more of a broader scope on things, but, yeah.
Kristen, thoughts?
I think, I think I understand Bill's point of new projects, for sure, you know, I think we're at a stage where we don't really want to start anything new, but I don't think we've been talking about anything new.
Well, Melsters.
Melsters.
Is old, but new.
Oh, old and new.
I thought Melsters was kind of done from our end.
That's going to be a close session item coming up in one of the next couple meetings, what the next steps are.
Maybe we just get a list of the ones we're doing now, and we can look at it and understand it, and what the added cost is, and we can see what's it worth continuing that project.
All right, I'll get to you.
So here's my, here's, here's my concern on our ask for that. We're down a person in the office, and Lisa has to get ready for the election. So I'm concerned about the ability to.
Make lists?
Yeah, make the list and get it turned around as quickly to what we might want. So I don't know what your concerns are on that, Lisa?
That is definitely a concern.
I mean, if Tammy was here, I would have no problem with having this asked. Do you think this is something Judy could do a little bit of research on?
Is there a lot of projects?
Yeah, it would take more time and effort for her to.
To do it than for you to.
Yeah. And.
Do we have that many projects for now, and kids up on?
There are. But, and defeating the purpose, but I can also reach out to the Attorney and MSA saying, "What, where are you on projects before you right now?"
Actually, that actually might not be a bad idea. What if we ask MSA and Legal, sort of, "Where are you with our current projects, and what do you think, what do you think the spend is going to be through the end of the year?" What if we get that estimate from those, and those are really the two big contractors, MSA and Legal? Can you think of any?
No, Eilers is, we don't get charged to do general work with them. As we get to the new budget, Brian reviewed it, we don't get charged for things like that. The Board has asked Brian to come and give a presentation on finances, and, you know, if we, and we'll get to this when we get to funding, if we go to a local bank to get funding, they don't need to get involved. If it's something bigger, then they're involved, and there's a base rate that we pay for funding if we're going through them, you know, a lot of the things they don't charge for.
All right, do you want to amend what you were asking here for?
We have, there's no motion right now. There's no motion in front of the Board, so.
I understand that, but you had on here, no overtime for staff except emergencies, and no discretionary spending for the remainder of the year. Do you want to throw in?
I'd be comfortable making a motion on those two items today. I'm not comfortable on making a motion on the consulting thing that Bill brought up without more information.
Okay.
So we're talking about getting an update on projects from MSA and Legal.
And what the estimate is through the end of the year, what additional spend they would be looking at through the end of the year.
Well, I'll make a motion to have no overtime except in emergencies situations, and the second one was what?
No discretionary.
No discretionary spending for the remainder of the year. Now, that's my motion. I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
All right, what I want to discuss about that is no overtime except in emergencies, so that's, that emergency is approved by Lisa. Correct?
Could we define emergency?
The Administrator approves that emergency?
Define discretionary spending.
Yeah, I don't know. How do I know?
The Board can't, if.
We'd have to all.
If there's a storm in the middle of the night, and there's tree stone, and we're not calling, we're not getting called. No, you know, and they're not using overtime, you know? They're only going to do it if it's an emergency, but yes, they can call me and, but yeah, the board can't approve an emergency because we don't know it a week and a half ahead of time.
Correct. And, and, and no one person on the board can independently act on those items, because we're all, we only have power as a board as a whole.
I will say, I got the call, but I just turned around and gave it to Public Works. We had a tree down over on Blue Jay Way.
You have to call me, you called Vicki first.
Okay, trying to call somebody, I did.
Reason I ask that question is, if there's an emergency, and the board has question about said emergency, oh, the why question, why is that an emergency? We can go to one person and ask that question to.
Yep.
And that would be the administrator.
Yep, the administrator.
That was my only reason for asking.
Yep, great, great question.
And probably the definition of what discretionary funding means, spending means as well, we'll come back to her.
All right.
It's discretionary to one person may not be discretionary to another. You know, let Lisa answer those questions.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
We've got a motion, a second, can you repeat the motion, please?
No, overtime except in emergency and no discretionary spending for the remainder of the year, both as approved by Lisa.
Okay.
Our administrator.
All right. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And then, keep your agenda item, we'll add on that, the questions for the other ones. Okay, so then, the second item that we looked at, the second meeting that we had dealt with the bud, with the budget. And we did go line by line through all of the budget items, and Lisa did a great job in the minutes with spelling out where we found, so it's, it's, it's not that we added in a bunch of dollars for spending, it's just Tammy wasn't sure what number to put in there, so she left it at zero, and we knew we had to put in something, so that's why we ended up putting in more dollars than we took out, because I wanted to make sure that we were.
Well, some were zero.
Right, some were zero.
Like, right off the bat, we're already $50,000 in the wrong direction.
Correct, right, right. So, so, a couple of the things that we absolutely took out, so things that are not going to be funded next year, are flowers downtown and garland, winter decorations. Those were taken off, because if we're.
This year they're paid for.
Right, this year they're paid for, next year they aren't, so.
Didn't we go half and half on that?
No, we did not, we took it off altogether.
Okay.
Because we were trying to be as austere as possible with the budget items. And quite frankly, there's, there's really no other way to cut money out of the budget unless we close the library, we, we stop mowing the parks, we don't do any snow plowing, like, don't pick up leaves for people on their bogs. I mean, there would have to be drastic cuts in services and in staffing in order for us to, to get any, get anywhere. We do recognize that, that it appears next year, the dollars that we have for the vineyard, based on the numbers that Lisa had, or Tammy, Lisa had provided, the developer's agreement for the vineyards should be paid off next year. So, a portion of the taxes that we're getting from the vineyards will come back to the village next year. Next year, it's going to be maybe $20,000, maybe $20,000, $30,000 next year. But the following year, in 2026, we're going to have all of those dollars. And all of those dollars is going to be pretty close to what we're having to borrow, or what we're recommending we borrow. In addition, Scott Farms, the Scott Farm development, a lot of those houses are new this year, so they really aren't on our tax rolls yet. So, we're going to get additional tax dollars represented from those homes over 2025 and 2026 as well, that will.
But that's already in the budget for 25.
Assist us as well.
Those should be in the budget for 25.
Do we know what those are?
The taxes, we don't know yet, the assessment is as of January 1st.
Right.
So.
So, it's also built a year if it was a vacant lot on January 1st.
Correct. Collecting taxes on the home until the following year.
So, if, if now there's a house on the lot, but on January 1st of this year, there was not a house on the lot.
It's taxed as a vacant lot.
In 26, or 25?
Taxes that come out in December.
Yeah.
So, collecting for 2026 would be based on, or for 2025, would be the vacant lot.
Would be the vacant lot.
Until 26, you see the full home.
Yes.
If it's halfway built, the assessed value is.
$400.
Commercial.
Or whatever.
Right, yeah. So, in 2026, we are going to be sitting in a much better position. So, it's really just the 2025 year that we have to.
Do we have an estimate how much the added revenue is from the Scott home?
One thing to keep in mind, too, even with the new homes and the increased value, we're still governed by levy limits.
Correct.
So, just because we have new homes, doesn't mean, we'll get a small net new construction, but it's a small percentage.
Yeah, well, that was my point, it's not going to be that much.
What happens is, mill rates go down because it's spread over more. But revenue caps, what we can spend.
So, it's not going to have a big impact.
Except by revenue caps.
So, what you're saying is not going to have a big impact.
Well, what will have a big impact is the paying off the vineyards.
Yeah.
We're not paying developers' agreements out of general funds.
Yep.
Which, right now, we have three that we're paying out of general funds. Well, one is, well, one is a TIP, but it's not performing, so.
So, here's how I look at it, if we borrow $300,000 next year, we got to pay back interest and principal the following year. And if it's a three-year note, that's probably $100,000.
I, I don't mean to interrupt, I talked to Brian today, because I didn't finance asked, what are the ramifications of taking out a loan and stuff? So, what Brian suggested in his reworking, the numbers will change some. He said, if tonight the board votes to go out for a loan, I would contact the local banks, see who could do. He said, usually, many municipalities do it, it has to be for a year and one day alone. He said, you take out the loan as soon as you start bringing in your January taxes, you pay off the loan as soon as you can, said oftentimes, you end up being able to then put it on the levy limit worksheet and so forth. You may come out ahead in the long run, you know, based on using the debt and the levy limit worksheet. So, his suggestion was you.
What does that mean? Does that mean you're going to add taxes on the, on the debt then to pay that? You're kind of double speaking there, and I don't understand it.
The debt is outside the revenue caps.
So, we're going to take $300,000 out of general fund, we're going to spend $300,000 in the general fund for expenses, and, but we're going to add it to the debt limit, which is a separate tax finance, so in effect, we're raising taxpayers' taxes by $300,000. So, we're, so, this year, our general fund is a million 67, no, excuse me, it's about, about a million dollars, I don't know the number. So, basically, we're increasing taxes by $300,000 this year, 30%. With a sleight of hand.
But I, I don't see this as a sleight of hand, Bill, this is, this is, this isn't, I don't, I don't see it as a sleight of hand. It's the way we have to do it.
Well, raising taxes 30%, that's, I don't agree with that.
Okay, what suggestions do you have, then?
What suggestions are there?
Well, you want to go through the budget line item by line item?
Yeah, go ahead. You, you tell me what you found in the budget you think we can do it out of.
I like them, but I don't like burying this deeper and deeper and kicking the can down the line.
This is, this is something that is going to be resolved in, it's one year, it's a one-year issue. We're going to be in a much better place in 2026.
Next year, we're going to need $300,000 again, plus inflation. And we'll get 200 back from Scott Farms, so we'll have to borrow another 100,000.
I don't see how we're going to need to have another 300,000 next year.
Whatever we're spending, whatever the 300,000 is going to go for this year, we're going to want to spend it again next year. Right? Do you agree, Paul?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I was looking at this.
You asked a question, why don't, what is the 300 we'll have to spend next year? If we're going to spend 300,000 this year that we can't cut, we're going to have to spend that 300,000 again next year that we can't cut, plus inflation on it.
No, because we're, but we're, next year, we're going to get like $250,000 from the vineyard.
It's 211.
No.
That's what's in the budget now.
When it, we looked at the.
So, now we're going to borrow another 100,000, so we're taxing, I mean, we're.
So, where's your cuts?
All right, so, I did a recap here, and a lot of these are questions that I don't understand, and they're a lot of discussion items, because I think we got, you know, we've, we've buried ourselves for four years with our head in the sand, ignoring the financial place we're at, and now it's going to hurt like hell. I don't like these, but I also don't like raising taxes by 30% this year. So, the first item is this special assessment streets.
That is already set, that is special assessment set. When we've done street projects, homeowners have the option to do the curb, pay for the curb gutter, their sidewalks, or they can do it, and we give them five years to pay it off, so these are set. So, a lot of these things, you know.
Why is it down $5,000 from last year?
Because some people have paid off their assessments, they've owed less, these are same.
You know, the budget's been the same in '23, '24, and '25, so is it an actual number? Is it just a number someone pulled out of the air?
No, 2021, the actual was $17,000, in '22, the actual is $22,000, in 2023, the actual is $20,000. People are paying off that, what, what, that, that basically loan for curb and gutter.
And our budget in '23 was $15,000, size of 792, our budget in '24 is 15, 792, and our budget proposal for '25 is 15, 792. Are we sure we're not going to get $20,000 of revenues in this year? Or we, did we just plug and play the same budget we've plugged and played the last two years?
We will be doing the special assessments to hand into the county, Tammy didn't get it done, I have not done it yet. We all know exactly what goes on the tax bill, but.
Additional revenue there that we're not looking at.
There isn't.
Okay, okay, let's just say, okay, let's increase that by $5,000, okay? So, we've got $5,000 revenue there.
State aid and local streets, you know, we're down $4,000 from the '24 projection. Do we, do we really believe we're going to be down $4,000?
We get the recommendations from, or the numbers from the state, what our road aid's going to be what, so those should be what Tammy put in, what the state has provided us with.
It will be lower this year than last year, or '25 than '24.
From what they have given us. And I'm sorry, I didn't do this worksheet Tammy did, so I don't have all the answers, but I do know state aids, the, you know, they tell us what we're getting. We can't determine it or change it.
Building permits, well, in '23, we got 90, or $86,000, our projection for this year is 90, we're only thinking we'll get 40 next year.
And, and that's really just a pass-through, so whatever dollar amount we put here, a majority of that then gets passed through to the line item for the building inspector? Because that's where most of those dollars, so as long as those two.
The line doesn't hardly change at all.
Pardon me?
The building inspector line hardly changes at all, it's not on the sheet. This is just a recap of the accounts I wanted to talk about to make it easier.
It is an estimate, and the committee talked about, you know, we've had the subdivisions, we've had the apartments, we don't know what's coming in next year, there is no more.
We're pretty confident on behalf, we're pretty confident on behalf.
We, we, we don't have.
We don't have a new subdivision coming.
Right, we, we don't have a lot of empty vacant properties that would be looking at pulling building permits.
There's a couple lots out by Quick Trip that, you know, we're, will these happen? There's, you know, we don't know. We don't know if people are remodeling their homes, you know, it.
So, the next one is reimbursement from Deerfield for police court. And in '23, we only had $9,000 so far, seven months, this year's $6,000. Do you really think it's going to go up to $16,000? That just seems pretty aggressive to me.
I don't know where Tammy, you know, we do have contracts from the police, from the courts that the board approves.
Never had that kind of revenue, though.
Okay, we can subtract, we can reduce it by $5,000.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the next four items, rent for village property signs, cable, TV, and lease, land rent and sign for village property. And we had no revenue on most of those in '23. But, I mean, now we're going to get revenue again on those, and we're going to have substantial increase in rent on village property signs. How is that going to happen?
I'm wondering if something's just not coded in yet, Bill, because of the, it's not through the end of the year? So, that's, that's why you're not seeing anything in 2024?
Or the 2023, I don't know.
But we didn't have anything in '23.
Well, we had 20, for rent of village property and signs, we did.
Yeah, 9,000, now I think we're going to get 12,500.
And I'm not sure where, I'm not sure what the.
We have more signs, and we raise the rates, what are we doing? Cable, TV, and rent, land rent was zero last year, zero so far this year, and we think we're going to get a bunch of money off it next year. What's our strategy there to do that?
I got a strategy. We got a job opening for Village Treasurer, Bill, you can apply for it.
That doesn't help at all, Chris.
It could help.
Okay, so we'll just subtract another $7,000 from revenue there.
I'm just asking, you said you went through every line item in detail.
We didn't, we did, and honestly, Bill, I did not, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I did not spend a whole lot of time looking at revenues. I was looking, spending my time seeing where we could cut money out of the budget. So, we spent a majority of our time looking at the expenses. So, so I'll, I'll, I'll give you whatever you want for the revenue side, because.
I'm not saying we should do this or that, I'm asking questions about what you put in the budget, so I can understand it.
Okay. But here, if we're talking increasing one by 5,000 and decreasing the other by 5,000, we haven't made any headway.
The other question I had down then is interest and principal on the $300,000 loan, I didn't see that coming back into the plan, but I didn't realize that that wouldn't be in the general fund, we just raised taxes on the other side, so I guess that question's answered.
Yeah, well, like I said, Brian will be reworking some of the numbers if the board approves a loan, things will change.
It'll be added to the tax rolls and people have to pay.
But all showing the debt and, yeah.
Which is unfortunate.
Bill, can I ask, can we just hit the highlights? I know we could go through each and every item on here, and I'm not trying to gloss over it, but in the interest of time, and we're still going in the closed session, can we look at those? can we look at those items that are involving at least a sum of 25,000 and go from there? Because it looks like you're, you're trying to knock this down by 308,000, and I appreciate that.
Well, just, it's for discussion purposes. I think there's, you know, if you go through line item by line, and there's things that can be talked about, and there's dollars on the table.
So we, so the legislative per diems and the president's salaries?
Just instance-
We can't make any changes to those that are us that are currently on the board?
I'm saying we don't get paid next year because of the financial condition we're in.
I donate my money back, so, to, to, so, I think all of us- People individually can choose what they want to do with that money. So if, if you want to-
We could take it out of the budget, too.
But we, we can't, because, because by statute, we can't change how we get paid, Bill. During a recession.
Future, future board members.
So, so the people who are up for reelection next year, if we made changes, it would affect them next year when, when the new term starts. The people who are new in that term, it would affect them. It wouldn't affect us.
Unless you're up for reelection.
Right.
Well, there's a bunch of small stuff, but in, you know, just a Mark's comment, jump down to public, I guess, Public Works hourly wages. I guess you answered the question. We were going to leave that position in there. I thought last meeting, we had talked about taking it out.
We, we, the Public Works director position, the dollar amounts in here, was hiring someone in Public Works starting in May. So it is reduced by those first five, four, five, four months of the year. But, but where you, when you look at Public Works, Bill, you actually have to look at Public Works, parks, and water and sewer, because, because all three of, all of our Public Works people work in all three different areas.
That's why I put those on there, the next three line items, I put a total.
And so you have to decide-
So 30,000 you're down is because of the open position for three months, four months, or whatever you said?
Yep.
That makes sense. So then there's, I'm suggesting legal work, we'd knock 25,000 off, and just, we're just going to have to stop spending money on legal work and figure it ourselves. Suggesting we reduce computer maintenance, you know, somehow reduce that. We got $15,000 in computer maintenance. Let's get that down. There's a whole bunch of office supplies.
We have a, we have a contract on the computer maintenance thing, so that's-
Well, maybe we need to renegotiate it or something. We've got all these administrative expenses. Can we cut back those in half? I mean, if we're on a, what do you guys call it? Emergency-only type spending plan?
Is our server in the cloud leasing now? That's what that's paying for, right? Because the $15,000 is for all the, right, and all the support.
Yeah, yeah.
That, I don't, I mean, that's, that's where all of the data on the village is stored, Bill, on that computer stuff. That's what, that's what we're paying for.
Suggesting we look at it and dig in and figure it out.
We, we did look at it.
Contracted services, we're budgeting 25,000. Let's cut that back by 10,000 more.
But I don't think would be realistic based on, I mean, Bill, I could, we could cut all these things.
I know. I'm not saying that's going to be fun, and I'm not saying it's going to be pleasant.
But then, I don't think we'd be realistic on, but, but I don't think then we're going to be realistic in what we're really going to need to spend next year.
Well, it sounds like you've got your mind made up.
Well, I, I mean, I'm only one person. I'm only one vote. It doesn't have to be unanimous.
Okay.
So, if, I, I just, I'm just letting you know where we were and where our conversations were in, in all of this.
Okay. I'm just not comfortable raising taxes 30% next year.
Would you be more comfortable if we went out for this loan and did not put it on the tax roll?
Well, how do we pick it back?
Is there an opinion how we can pay it back?
Sure. I mean, if we can pay it back.
I'd help.
It's got to be paid back.
Yeah, I don't know how we go out for a loan without it being on the tax roll. I-
All right.
You can't put it, uh-
Another big one is the, the police coverage. You know, we've not been fully staffed in '21, '22, '23. We're forecasting to be fully staffed this year. Maybe we have to cut back our police coverage by 100,000. Well, we've gotten by for four years looking at police coverages.
How are you going to, how are you going to cut, how are you going to cut the police coverage, Bill?
Have fewer hours, fewer officers. Have we signed it for next year? We have?
Aren't you on that committee?
We approved it on the joint-
We approved it for the budget. We didn't approve the contract.
Yeah, that's what you approved.
That's what we approved, right?
The budget was the recommendation to the board to-
The budget, but we didn't sign anything. I mean, so let's just raise taxes and screw it, if you don't want to do any work.
I don't think it's that cut and dry.
Well, I don't either, but it's-
Nobody wants to raise taxes. We also are not, this board is paying for the sins of, of some of the, I shouldn't say the sins, the decisions of the way previous boards have handled the finances.
Agreed. And just kicking the can down the road to-
But we're not kicking the can down the road by taking out the loan, paying for the taxes this year, and then next year, we should be in a much better place when we're looking at the budget for 2026.
And we've got a $300,000 loan, and we're still going to have 300,000 expenses to cover.
We will not be paying the-
Well, I guess we don't have to pay the loan because we charge the taxpayers for it, forgetting that.
We won't have to be paying the developers' agreement out of our general fund. That's a big part. That's when I did talk to Brian today, or he sent an email saying, basically what you're looking to cover is the developers' agreement incentive.
Yep.
Or you could plug in leasing, or the fire and EMS, or, you know, those are the things that-
The other big item on here, streets and roads, is a $121,000 budget item. I have no idea what that is.
That is, because that is what we will be getting in, um, state road aids.
That comes from the other page.
In the previous years, but it is supposed to be shown in, in expenses, and those have to be spent on roads.
Back the bus up again. Can you say that again?
That's, the, the second line item on the revenue side, where it's the 121 state and aid local streets.
Yeah.
That has to be now reflected in our expenses, where, where it, in previous years, I don't know that we had to, to, there was a new-
It wasn't shown. It has to be shown.
And it has to be shown this year.
We weren't doing it right before. Is that what you're saying?
We got new information, and based on the new information, we're putting it in here now, Bill.
So that revenue we got has to be spent on roads, where in the years past, we haven't spent it on roads. That's what you're telling me. So we can't take it out of the budget here, like we did in previous years?
No.
Whoa. Okay, I'm learning. And other big stuff, I'm, you know, and as much as I hate it, I'm saying let's, we're going to have to stop spending money on senior services, med drops, food pantry, arts. We don't have the money. I mean, we're borrowing money. And that was my other suggestion, just, you know, it's not, I don't enjoy this. But there's ways to cut money.
I'm not comfortable cutting senior services.
What is that for?
It's for meals.
For the meals.
For meals, so, social work. Yeah, it's-
I think that contract, what is that, through McFarland?
McFarland Senior Outreach.
And I know people here, I, I attend those meetings, and I, not always, and, but I will stop in, and there might be 15 people.
I know, but we're broke, Mark.
I, I know that.
I mean, right now, I did a calculation. At the end of last year, on January 1st of this year, we had $22,000 in the bank. This year, we were supposed to collect a million one in property taxes. 500,000, that was collected last year and spent, so we only got 550,000 coming in this year. We got 475,000 coming in from other budgetary items, state aid and stuff. Our budget this year would spend $2 million. If we spent a million eight so far through 11 months, it's right now, our general fund is negative 785,000. So we're taking money out of our other funds and using it to pay bills in our general fund. 785,000, and now we want to borrow 300.
And we had cut the Arts Council and the, we had cut some of those already.
I understand.
From, from our budget. I mean, so we did already reduce them by-
50%.
50%.
And we're still not living within our means.
What's the no way by fire and EMS?
We're going to spend the same amount as last year and the year before. I mean, we're budgeting the same.
That you're thinking it's going to be more than that or less than that?
I think it's going to be more. Nothing I've heard in any of our call sessions tells me it's going to be less.
Is it because of fire or EMS?
EMS.
Okay.
Yep, good.
Fair point.
Yeah. And the majority of the cost is EMS.
Million, 100,000 dollars for damage.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, what do we want to do with this information, if anything, here? Have you, have you presented any of this? Bill, you haven't gone to the audit and finance because you don't know when the meetings are?
Yeah, and they get scheduled to last late, and I've already got commitments those evenings.
All right.
I mean, if there's another meeting I can make, then I'm glad to go and discuss these.
Okay.
I don't, I'm making a motion to take out a loan for $300,000 to cover our, our operating expenses for 2025. And it looks like it's going to die for lack of a second.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking this through, Paula. Just, just hang in there. Okay.
I will just give you, when I did talk to Brian today, he said if it's approved, to reach out to local banks, get what they'd be willing to offer, you'd be looking at a one-year and one-day loan. He said you'd want to sign it the day you pass the budget. It would, you'd want it prepayable at any time, tax exempt. So after we start collecting taxes, to pay it off as soon as we can, and, so.
Paula, a second, so we can have more conversation.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion. I'll go first. Normally, I go last, but I serve on the Audit and Finance Committee, and I understand, Bill, your alarm. I truly do. I, I also, in looking at the bigger pieces of what's going on with what we've got with the winery and the growth that we're going to have here with Scott Farms, I do feel that we've kind of swallowed a very large animal, and maybe we shouldn't have. We did some things that were, were wrong. We, we didn't code it to the capital budget. We tried to just swallow it up through the operating, and that's part of what we have. But we also have our, these two projects are going to be paying off. I mean, we will be seeing positive dollars. Maybe not in the next 12 months, but we will see it from Scott Farms. And I do think that with what's, everything, everything that's going on with winery, to be able to pay that. I do appreciate this. I serve on the Audit and Finance. I would ask you to come to the next meeting, and I will do everything possible to make sure that you've got at least a week's notice, so that you can go into more detail on these, because I think that some of this information, you know, you're operating with, it's going to be very, very difficult for the community to turn its back on things such as senior services. I mean, I talk to these folks, and they, they count on that meal. It's, it's not a lot in, in the light of it, but everything else in totality, it is. And you're right. You are absolutely right. We're asking ourselves to go and borrow $300,000, and we don't even know that that's the amount, because we don't have the final numbers from fire and EMS. And I'm afraid that could be more than what we're talking about. So I'm going to go along with, with taking a loan out, you know, to, to get through this, but I would also ask you to come before us, because we can still, with the budget, be looking at, at some of these expenses.
I'd be glad to if we could get it scheduled in advance.
Okay.
You know, on the 300,000, I didn't realize it would be paid through tax dollars. You know, I guess it's one-time tax rate increase of 30%. I don't know how many over years that would take, but we're still going to be 100,000 short next year. If we're 300 short this year, and we're going to get 200 from the vineyards, that leaves us 100,000 short next year.
Yeah, but don't, don't forget what we're also going to be getting with Scott Farms.
Well, according to Lisa, it's not going to be much.
I thought all those homes-
Because of the levy limit. Because of levy limit, we will get some net new construction increase in the levy limit, but it doesn't just-
It's not 100,000.
Add on to, you know.
You know, it'd be nice if we could get a schedule and lay that all out on a sheet of papers, understood?
And-
So we really knew what we're getting.
It's, uh, levy limits, revenue caps are, the majority of small communities are dealing with the same issue we are.
All right. Chris, any comments?
I think with all the services that we provide, I mean, you know, my mind goes towards library services and, and, you know, the, how we need our part-time help now, even now more than ever. You know, I, I feel more inclined to go with the $300,000 loan. I, I know after all these years, we've, we've taken some pride in the fact that we haven't ever had to go out for loans for operating expenses. So we have to eat a little cruel, because we have to this year, but I think we'd be remiss to do this action and not take into consideration this piece of paper we got from Bill, and see where we can, even with this loan, where we can cut. And if we can cut during the 2025, and we can try to, you know, strive, strive towards that 100,000 that Bill's talking about with what he has on this piece of paper, I think we'd be doing our due diligence as a board by, by, you know, bringing that into play.
Chris?
I think we have to look at all options. I think the 300,000, I feel like I say this all the time, is the least worst option. But I agree that we still have to go back through. None of these things are going to be popular decisions.
No.
And we have to determine, it's, it's not what we can live with, it's what they can live with.
That's why it'd be nice if we had a referendum. Let the taxpayers decide before we raise the taxes 300,000.
It's late now for referendums.
It's too late now for a referendum, but we could do one for next year.
We'll see how they do with referendums at the City of Madison and Madison School Board.
I hope, I hope that we can make some headway with the EMS situation to help the, you know, I don't know what the heck's happening there, but I, we can't, but the unfortunate part is we can't undo the past. That's dumb, that we can't.
But the operating expenses are continuing on from the past.
Correct. And I don't disagree that we look at this in all, I don't disagree at all.
Okay. I'm just saying, don't raise taxes, cut expenses is an option. Maybe it's a compromise.
All right. Hold off. I'm gonna let you speak, and then I'm gonna just.
I have nothing to, I mean.
Do you have a couple minutes, Bill? Okay. All right.
I pretty much said.
I mean, I just want to say this wasn't, this isn't easy for any of us, and, and none of us want to be in this position. I just, I just don't see any other choice at this point.
I mean, do we realistically think in that whole budget that we have $300,000 that we can cut out of that?
We try.
We try.
Right.
Came to $86,000.
Right.
And that was, that was.
It can be done, but it's gonna be painful.
We cut 56,000, $750 out of the budget. $56,000 is what we cut by going line, line by line on, on, on every item.
I mean, part of, a big part of the problem too is the $120,000 in street aids that we weren't properly handling in prior years, and now we're getting smacked over the head with that this year because of that error.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second to go for a loan here for a year and a day of $300,000 for our operating expenses for 2025. Roll call, please.
Paul and Beck, yes. Chris?
No.
Cracko, Brian.
Yes.
Franklin, Blackwood. McNally.
Yes. Okay. Now, right along with this, I don't normally ask, but Paula, do you know when we're gonna have the next Audit and Finance meeting?
We weren't planning to do another one because, you know, we had gone through all of this stuff and didn't see where we could cut any more out.
But if we were to have one more, because we have a board member who's gone to an awful lot of trouble.
Okay. Bill, when are you available? And remember, Lisa's preparing for taxes.
And I will say, our notice, based on what we have right now with the $300,000 loan, would be going to the newspaper this week. That doesn't mean we can't change anything. The public hearing will be an approval at the last meeting in November, but the notice goes to the paper this week based on what we have at this point.
Okay. Bill, your availability for a meeting?
Monday or Tuesday night next week.
Tuesday night is training for elections.
Yeah. Do we have to do it, do we have to do it next week?
No.
Can we do it after the election?
Yeah.
Can we do it, can we do it after the election?
Which, what day are you suggesting?
Whenever you're available after, I just, not, not my, the following week, the following week after the election.
Election's the fifth?
Yeah.
Election's the fifth, so the following week. So the week of the 12th?
The only day, the only day that opened would be Monday night.
It's good by me.
That's fine commission if we.
Monday, the 11th?
Wait just a second.
If we have fine commission, it's then.
Can you meet it, can you meet it 5:00?
The sooner the better, yeah.
Can we do it 5:00? Okay, 5:00 on the 11th then.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anybody else that wants to sit in on this meeting, you're, you're welcome to it. I thank you for being here this evening to endure all this. We kind of bounced around in here. No discretionary spending, I think we covered that.
Yeah, we did. That was the previous motion.
Capital expenditures, we got that. Friends of the Village, creative financing, we kind of talked that through. Public Works Committee considerations.
So that was just, just a memo that I wanted to give to the Public Works.
And it did send that to committee members.
What was that?
I did send it to committee members as well.
Oh, great. It was just because we, we made some sort of like decisions as part of the budgeting that, that may affect public works stuff, and I just wanted to make sure the Public Works Committee was aware of it. So that's really all that that memo involved.
I do want to say this for our Public Works, and I speak on behalf of the Audit and Finance as well as the Village Board of Trustees. You folks are not responsible for the predicament that we are in, all right? It is not your fault. We have, we have made some decisions, and we are living with the consequences, but it's not because of Public Works. I just want to say that. Okay. All right. Moving on, I think we covered the $300,000 loan. Unfinished business, the Dancing Goat sampling plan.
So we were, we had a sampling plan available. I, at Water and Sewer did, was recommended to the board to approve it, but I had also was concerned because COWC was mentioned many, many times throughout that document. And I'm like, has COWC seen this and has their, because I don't, like, we as a municipality can direct their staff on what they're supposed to do. So Steve Strus took it to COWC. COWC does have a couple of concerns in that document and requested that we have a meeting between the Dancing Goat, COWC, and us in order to be able to address the concerns in that document. So I think that's what our next steps are gonna be in order to get that signed off. And I think the concern had to do with notification or when we need to do sampling.
It's just, it's just the village letting us know that someone from, that operators pulled a sample out of that manhole. I'm happy to sit with COWC. I'm kind of curious as to why they're concerned about the village operator, but I'm happy to engage in that meeting and unfortunately, we'll share some of our past experience with the operators here, just as part of that, that's why that's in that document itself.
Yeah. And I, I think they were, they were concerned about precedence with other areas in, in, you know, maybe even, you know, other areas that they were pulling, and I, I'm not exactly sure. I shouldn't even speak because I don't know, because I've talked to anyone in the email I received. So, so we'll see what we can get and have a quick conversation.
All right. Can I ask a quick question on this? Hopefully it's quick. At one time, we were talking that they would have to spend.
We gave the recommendation, but sorry.
$100 to $150,000 or $200,000, put a bunch of sampling equipment in. Does this negate that then?
Yes.
So they're not gonna have to do that?
Correct.
The question was who would have access to it?
We can, yeah, they came, they came up with another plan that is, I think, a better plan.
Yeah, I'm just happy to open the door.
Yeah.
Bill, I think you're good on some professional services. We've got engineers and attorneys on the bill.
Yeah, I mean, how much do we spend on this? Yeah.
Who signed it last year?
Yeah. It's part of my point, we spend way too much money on professional services.
Okay. All right, so is there anything else here on the Dancing Goat sampling? Paula, just be a meeting.
We'll just follow up, do a meeting with Lisa, and then it'll probably just be you guys to rubber stamp it at the next board meeting.
Okay. All right. Moving on, Fire Commission update. Chris?
We were supposed to have a meeting, but it, last Wednesday, but it was canceled due to the, the president wanted to move it out based off of, in 18th, I think it was, a hearing on the 18th on what the outcome of the hearing was. And then Kristen found some, some other information, if you'd like to share it with the board.
There is a meeting scheduled tomorrow night for, we may back up. The Village of Rockdale have their meeting last night. They did not discuss the budget, but they did mention that there was a meeting that was occurring between the Kristiana Lake Mills and the Rockdale tomorrow night.
In Kristiana.
In Kristiana in a closed session to discuss the fire and EMS situation. And then their discussion was that we would have a five municipality meeting in early November. So they have that meeting scheduled tomorrow night, but we don't know why. Other than there was discussion that they don't want to have to do arbitration.
Wasn't, wasn't there some discussion with Lake Mills to have a meeting?
Yeah.
With all five?
Yeah, Lake Mills was supposed to.
They mentioned that during their.
Yep, and I sent an email saying we were interested and have not heard back.
Okay. So they're gonna meet tomorrow night, the three of them. All right.
Can I ask a question? When is the next, sorry, when is the next regular Fire Commission meeting?
I have not seen any agenda or any, any talk about it.
So how are mills being paid?
That's a great question. I can't answer it. I would imagine that the President and the Treasurer are taking in the bills and paying them. That's, that's what I can surmise. I know we haven't had a meeting to actually vote on, but.
Wasn't there discussion that they would use Zoom or something along those lines to pay, to have those quick, one quote. They still have posted, there's.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, we're still a member of that Fire Commission.
And that's why I will be there at that meeting tomorrow and.
Can be posted as a, oh, it's too late, isn't it? Well, if you go as public, you're not participating, you're just going as public.
As long as we don't discuss, I could post a notice tomorrow that a majority of the board may be in an intended meeting.
What time is it tomorrow?
We may not get invited into the closed session, but I think that speaks volumes.
All right. Okay. Is there anything else, Chris?
No, nothing else.
All right. All right. Okay. We're gonna move on. The agenda item nine, correspondence, I do not see anything that we need to review. Ten questions or things of staff, future agenda items. We've got four on here, I'm gonna add one more right away. Room tax ordinance, fee schedule resolution, quick trip, liquor license, bike trail. And lastly, the public comment, that won't be a while, it'd be in December.
On the ongoing project.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to augment the schedule with? All right. Okay. That takes us up to 11. And upcoming meetings, October 22nd is the Village Board, November 5th is the election, and November 7th Economic Development Committee. And we have others.
The 11th. The 11th.
Product and finance.
Okay. Thank you.
How often does personnel meet? Does that need to be scheduled?
When, as, as needed, as personnel meets as needed.
Do we need, do we need that meet? So we get it on calendar?
I just looked at the board note, Melissa, Melissa, I'm sorry, not Melissa. Samantha Stevenson was here to talk about the library budget, but I'm one.
That's fine, yeah.
At 11th, I was just gonna say, can you come to the 11th? Yeah, the meeting at 11th at 5:00.
Part of this.
I speak early, that would hinder because I have a meeting at 6:30.
Oh, absolutely, we'll put you up first. Okay. I will put you first on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm so sorry you have to stay all day.
We need to have a personnel meeting.
All right. Are there any other upcoming meetings? Okay. Item.
The 12th.
Yeah. Okay. And then item 12. Somebody wanna help me?
I'll make a motion convenient closed session per 1985-1 Echo, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or connecting with or prescribed public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, this has to do with fire and EMS commission. And per 1985-1 Charlie of the Wisconsin statutes, to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of Village employees, and that has to be at the Public Works position.
All right. Okay. Roll call, please.